Okay, this is the Select Board and it is May 23rd, 2022. And I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. And the very first item of business is, well, to ask for a pro tem clerk for the Select Board. So can I have a motion to appoint a pro tem clerk? Because Teri Ackerman has told us that she will not be here tonight. Okay, well, who are you proposing?
I'll do it.
Okay.
You should. I'll do it, I'm fine.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor for Mary Hartman to be the clerk pro tem for this meeting.
Second.
Second, yeah.
Okay.
Do you have a hard copy of the motions?
I have a hard copy of the motions.
Can I have that?
Yes.
Might help.
Yeah, might help. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, so in fact, to put you right on the spot, their first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. So could we have a motion for that?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, any adjustments, anything?
Yes, please.
Okay.
In the minutes on page nine, there are two items that I saw. One at the beginning where I'm quoted as reminding people to participate in the housing production plan, and it's missing the word "survey."
Okay.
And then at the end of that same page, it does not note the roll call that was taken to go into executive session.
Oh, well, that's very important because we did take a roll call.
We did.
Okay, so any other amendments?
Yeah, I would, as long as we got those minutes open. I believe that there was a statement in that I expressed an opinion with regard to the process of getting the approval of outdoor dining permits, and it said that I expressed disdain. I would like the word disdain to be underlined.
I don't know that we have a convention of that kind of emphasis, but as long as you're okay with disdain, I think we're probably all right.
All right.
Yeah. So let's see, with the amendments that Ms. Escobedo has offered, do we approve the consent agenda?
Is there a second motion?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. That's unanimously. Okay, so we're ready for the interim town manager's report.
Okay, thank you. The Chair asked that I reinstitute an update on COVID, and we didn't have time to put that into the report. But I did want to let you know that cases, as I'm sure you know, are rising. This last reporting period, May 16 to May 22, there were 23 cases reported in persons under age 18 and 39 over 18, for a total of 62. Those numbers are updated every Wednesday. As I'm sure you know, these are likely understated and maybe quite a bit understated because most people are home testing now and not reporting. But we will continue or reinstitute that part of the weekly report, at least throughout this surge. As a result of the rise in cases, the Council on Aging expects to reinstitute or reinstate its mask mandate for hopefully a short period of time. But they're looking to do that maybe later this week and extend it two weeks past Memorial Day, so probably until mid-June, and then they'll reevaluate. So the reason they're not doing it immediately is they have a number of programs that are scheduled, and they want to give people time, they don't want to turn people away from the programming, but they would like to get that in place. That is the only place in town where masks would be mandated. And again, it's because of the population that is served out of that facility. I'm happy to report to you that Donna McIntosh will be joining the Town Manager's Office team on June 13. She will be the Executive Assistant. This particular onboarding seems to have taken forever, and we are very happy to have her June 13. Donna, as I've mentioned in the report, has over 20 years' experience serving as, in a similar role in multiple communities. And for the last five years, she's been at Brandeis University and directly involved in staff and student communications. And so we're looking to put those skills to use here.
Can I ask a question about that? We have Mr. Carmody.
Yeah.
We have Mike Gibbons, we have Donna.
Yes.
And then we have Kelly Herbst, right, who are in your office. And I'm not clear as to what the areas of function are for those very people. It may be somewhat fluid at this point, but it would be nice to know who to talk to when you have whichever issue.
Yeah, so I can take a minute just to go through that quickly. So Kelly Hebert is serving as the interim assistant town manager. So she is assuming most of the roles that the former deputy town manager held. She is overseeing human services, recreation, and doing some special projects. So basically what Kate Hodges had been doing. Chris Carmody is continuing right now as our town meeting coordinator. He's doing more special projects. He is doing risk management activities, and he is our legislative liaison. Donna McIntosh is filling the position formally held by Chris Carmody. So more support within the organization. And Mike Gibbons is, he is a senior administrative assistant. He's the primary support for the Select Board and other boards and committees as assigned.
So I think it's the bottom line that our go-to person is Mike.
Is Mike, right.
When it's not you.
Yeah, still good to know what the other people in the office are.
Yeah, I've been CCing Chris on stuff, but it sounds like I don't have to necessarily.
Right, you don't have to. We're trying to get him out of the business of that. So Mike will be doing all of your licensing activities, you know, really any constituent services that you would like to be involved in. He's the primary person.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm pleased to report that the Police Department was notified by the Massachusetts Police Accreditation Commission's assessment team that the department has met all of the requirements for accreditation. There will be a final vote on the application for accreditation on June 21. And when the police chief visits with you in July, we'll be talking about that and other activities of the department. Last week was Public Works Week. We had a really nice staff appreciation luncheon on Thursday. It was a rainy day, but it was nice to get everybody together. I think the staff was really happy to have that. And we certainly appreciate all of the work that those folks do. Let's see, in the report, we mentioned some of the major road projects, Commonwealth Ave., Hubbard Street, Barrett's Mill Road, and there's a description of the work that's being done there. We had national, or celebrated National Bike to Work Day last week on the 20th. Had a reasonable amount of participation in that. The Housing Production Plan Consultant and the Regional Housing Services Office staff met with the Steering Committee and staff to discuss the schedule and work completed to date, as well as outreach and publicity needed for the virtual public forum, which will be on Tuesday, June 7th at 7:00 PM. The survey is open until Friday, June 10. There is also another public forum on the Assabitt River Bridge and Trail that will be on June 16. There are two different opportunities, one at 9:30 AM and one at 5:30 PM. Both of those will be in the café at 300 Baker Ave., and the consultant will be there to present that project.
That's the bridge going over, the pedestrian bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Over in West Concord.
Yes.
Got it.
Let's see. We had an Eagle Scout project complete last weekend. The project was, or the Eagle Scout is a CCHS student, Christian Perata, who installed four property signs and four hanging signs at each of the main entrances to White Pond Reservation. That project was the result of many hours' worth of work and participation by a group. The installation took place over a two-day period, and as long as the signs are properly maintained, they should last for 20 years or so. So that's really nice. I'm not sure how familiar you are with the Eagle Scout projects, but they're really something, and it takes an awful lot of work and effort on the part of people to attain the rank of Eagle Scout. And so other than that, there's a lot of information about different activities of departments. I would like to mention that the library had its first open house this past Saturday. And also, we had the unveiling of the beautiful community mural at Fowler, also on Saturday. The second open house is scheduled for June 18, where there'll be the unveiling of the duckling. She's shown, will be there, and I hear she's signing autographs.
Right.
Thank you.
Carrie, can you tell us when the White Pond Beach will open?
Yes, and so I know there are two different dates. The initial, we were hoping for the beach to be open on the 28th, but it is now pushed back to, I believe it's June 20, June 21, June 20. So the construction is behind schedule, and we're looking at June 20 now for...
Okay, any other questions for the town manager?
Carrie, I'd just like to comment that I think you and everyone who's worked on it have done a great job of coordinating recognition for, in this case, the DPW, not only on the website, you know, and the proclamation and the luncheon. And I'm sure, you know, that goes a long way in terms of, but it's the coordination, I think, that makes an impact for others to notice as well. So that's terrific.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think there's a lot of positive energy. We used to have, it was harder to get departments to contribute to the report, and it's much, much easier now. And it seems like there's a lot of positive energy, and it's making it easier. And I do think it's helpful. I know some of the information is maybe less important than others, but it's...
I love the report.
Yeah, well, good, I appreciate that, thank you.
Have we thought about putting that report either in the packet or on the website itself for the town to see?
Yeah.
Because to see the, you know, what...
Yeah, it's like a weekly journal of happenings around town.
We will do that, yeah.
Interim Town Manager and Editor-in-Chief.
I used to write for a school newspaper.
There you go, see?
I actually do not write the report, so Aaron Stevens is the one who coordinates all of that. She does a terrific job, and I don't want to take away from the work that she does.
Okay. All right, I have three items for the Chair's report this week, and believe it or not, they're not apologies this time. So the first is that negotiations with the interim town manager over becoming more permanently established are going well. So we should pencil in that we would have an executive session June 6 to review the proposed contract terms and see if we can come to agreement as a board and present that to Ms. LaFleur. The second item is that we have, as you may have noticed in the packet, a very large number of openings in our town boards and committees. It is typical at this time of year, as we have kind of a switch of the fiscal year and appointments. But I just wanted to say that I think it's even more so than usual. So if you have considered out there in the audience or anywhere, joining a town board or committee, or you know someone who you believe that would be a good candidate, I would ask you not to ask what your town can do for you, but what you can do for your town, and consider submitting an online volunteer card. Then the third thing is that we had four, count them, four, public hearings for National Grid scheduled for this evening, for grants of location petitions for rebuilding or extension of natural gas infrastructure. At 4:14 PM this afternoon, the applicant requested postponement. We have, as a result, kind of scrambled to rearrange the agenda. So we will be later in this meeting opening and continuing each of those four public hearings. We do, however, need to respect the published times for the liquor licenses and the taxi license that had been advertised. So we will be pulling other items in the agenda forward and will seek to hold those public hearings on schedule at their appointed times. Yes?
So I just have a question about that. Since we were notified so late by National Grid regarding pulling the hearings this afternoon, what is the impact on our residents, given that I'm assuming notifications went out to them for work that was going to begin as early as soon?
Am I right that the reason that they were pulled was that our Sustainability Director raised some issues? Additional issues?
I don't believe those are the...
No, was that independent?
What was cited was the memos from the Public Works Department, and that they received them, they say, on Friday afternoon, and that they contained some unexpected conditions. That was the cited reason.
And those unexpected conditions had nothing to do with the observations of our Sustainability Director?
I don't believe so. In fact, I believe that that memo was composed this afternoon after a meeting with town council. And I don't even believe that National Grid's aware of those observations as of yet. So given all of that, we have some members of our Civil War Monument Task Force here, present in the room. And I would like to ask if they would be willing to take their agenda item now and make their presentation about the status of their work. Please step up and introduce yourselves. We have a couple of microphones here. One thing that we'd like to note is to speak closely into the microphones. That helps our at-home audience.
Please move over, can I move over a little bit?
So if you just start and introduce your name, address, and your role in the committee.
I'm Beth Van Duser for Granite Post Road.
Matt McGrath, 134 Belknap Street.
David Wood, 226 Lexington Road.
Okay, thank you. And so feel free to go ahead.
So the Civil War Monument Task Force was charged to establish an ad hoc task force of five members to be appointed by the Select Board to consider and advise the Board on placing one or more additional names, including that of George Dugan, on the tablet of the Civil War Soldiers Memorial, and to review requests made in 1881 and 1914, and make a final determination regarding the inclusion of any additional names. It will make a recommendation to the Select Board on whether replacing the tablet is the best course of action. Will identify both costs and sources of funding for the project and for the care and preservation of the memorial. The task force will file its final report six months from the date of its formation, whereupon it will be dissolved. So we sent a bunch of accessories, documents, to all of you, so will we be referring to them?
I think that they're included in the packet.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So the Select Board appointed a task force of five in August 2021. The task force reviewed the nine names. You should have a list of 10 names nominated by previous committees that were not added to the monument. So we did research this past year, and we did not turn up any new information that would add those previously nominated names to the monument. Instead, the task force then focused on vetting Private George Washington Dugan, who was first proposed for addition to the Civil War Monument in 2014. The 2021 task force used the criteria in place by previous committees, as well as Town of Concord Administrative Policy and Procedure Number 26, Guidelines for Placement of Names on War Memorials, or APP 26. Private Dugan needed to have been born in Concord or found a home or a grave here. Additionally, he needed to have died before the formation of the First Committee, March 19, 1866. And finally, his death must have been a result of the war. So those are our criteria. So APP 26-2B, have you guys seen APP 26? I have copies if you want it. Yeah. If you really want it, I have copies. You're good? Okay. Although it is generally accepted that George W. Dugan was born in Concord and original record was not found, what was found was a handwritten note on a marriage document by Reverend Brazilei Frost stating that George Dugan was born in Concord. Private Dugan's seven brothers and sisters were born in Concord on the land his father purchased back in 1792. Therefore, it stands to reason that he was also born here. However, as no original document was found, the committee decided to focus on gathering other information to show that George W. Dugan met Criterion 2B on APP 26, substantial roots in the community. So on the list of 10 individuals, the very last one is Dugan, and we list a number of things. So research in the Town of Concord archives provided information about George W. Dugan that was previously unknown. Private Dugan was listed as a taxpayer for 17 years. Importantly, thanks to an email from Bob Gross on a different history project, it was discovered that George W. Dugan was registered as a voter for the years 1838, 1840, and 1841. Additionally, on April 21, 1840, George Dugan wrote to the town clerk, Cyrus Stowe, that he did not wish to be considered as a member of the old parish in Concord. So all this vital information shows Private Dugan was a part of our Concord community. In addition to living in town, we know George Dugan owned land in Concord. In 1847, he purchased a plot of land from William Wheeler and Marshall Miles. The 4.7-acre parcel had 781 feet, or about 0.15 miles, of frontage on Old Road to Nine Acre Corner, or Ornac. Dugan sold his woodlot 10 months later after he purchased it. And using grantor and grantee books from the Southern Middlesex Registry of Deeds, I was able to track the land forward to 1920 to a Daniel G. Wing, purchasing multiple parcels of land, including the one that once belonged to George Dugan, to create a 65-acre farm. Unfortunately, neither Daniel Wing nor his wife were listed in the grantor books after that. So I then just picked properties, starting down closer to Sudbury, and worked my way up Ornac. And I found 535 Ornac, traced back to the missing Wing land. Additionally, this tracking led me to a 1926 land document that listed properties the Town of Concord was going to take land from for highway purposes to remove an S curve. One property listed was the Wing property. So I passed my information to the Town of Concord archivist, Nathaniel Smith, who was able to email me a PDF of the road survey, and you have two pages of that. And it shows the name Daniel G. Wing. I then was told by my task force, we should send it to Steve Dukran, Town of Concord engineer. And he's like, yep, we'll look at this. He sent it to Joe Cormier, and Cormier was able to send me a reply that stated, "Wing's name appears approximately where current day 455 Ornac is." So backtracking that property through land grants also leads to the missing Wing purchase. So the land of Daniel G. Wing slash George Dugan, because he had frontal property on Ornac, is somewhere between 455 and 535, 455 and 535 Ornac. And then it went in a really long way, it was 4.7 acres. So we kind of know actually where his land is now, which is really cool. In addition to tax information, voter registration, and land ownership, George Dugan was married by Reverend Brazilei Frost on November 9, 1854, in Concord. This entry is where Reverend Frost mentions that George Dugan was born in Concord. And finally, in August of 1860, George W. Dugan was assisted by the Alms House here in Concord. In New England, back then, the poorhouse would only pay for you to be assisted by them if you had a settlement in the town. For them not to have any paperwork asking somebody else for money means that they accepted him as one of their own. So there's an overwhelming amount of primary evidence that proves George Dugan had substantial roots in the Concord community. Criterion 3 of APP 26 states, "Death must have occurred or have been the direct result of injuries suffered during a war or military conflict declared by the President of the United States." So the Civil War was declared by President Lincoln. As a black man, George Dugan could not join the war until Governor Andrew obtained an order to create black regiments. Once the order was obtained, Dugan enlisted, and he joined the newly formed 54th Massachusetts. He was mustered into Company A of the 54th and with his regiment. When given the order to take part in the assault on Fort Wagner, he was there, and then he was never seen again. And the issue is, he was listed as missing almost immediately after. The National Archives has a document that lists the men that were missing, and he's number six on the list, and it is not changed until 1932. So our previous committees that changed out the plaque twice to add names never added his because he was never listed as dead. Do you guys want to take over?
Well, I would just add to that, that in 1932, the adjutant general, Massachusetts Adjutant General, changed Dugan's status to assumed killed, which is, at least in the opinion of the committee, is the criterion needed to include George Dugan on the monument. Shall I pick up on the plaque at this point?
Go for it.
So the committee looked at the various options available for introducing George Dugan's name, but it's not just George Dugan's name, it's also the name of the 54th that has to go on the monument. That's the style that the regiment's listed, and then the decedent. And there's also an underscore. So it can't be shoehorned in in any way. We determined that what we should be looking for is a way to replace the plaque. As Beth mentioned, the plaque has been twice replaced before, 1915 and the earlier ones in the 1880s, for the same reason that we're proposing that now. So we contacted a typographer. You need to get one of these bronze plaques made, takes a foundry. The foundry wants a certain software, or wants the information in a certain format. So we contacted a typographer, got the vector file that we need, passed it on to a foundry, and got a suggestion for what it would cost from that foundry. $25,000 was that number. So that, we will take that proposal and turn it into a request for quotes, and then send that, send the RFP to the initial foundry and to two others yet to be determined in order to get competitive quotes for that number. And then Beth has worked with John to create a request for proposals based on information that we received from Dedalus, which is a Boston-based firm that specializes in outdoor sculptures. Dedalus, who worked on the Melvin Memorial for all those decades, possibly. And any monument you can name in greater Boston area, very often the care falls to Dedalus. So we took that information, converted it into PDF. That'll be posted online. We'll send it out to some suppliers that we've identified, including the foundry who provided the quote for the plaque. They also do the other element that we're looking to accomplish with this, which is to clean the monument. The monument has not been cleaned since 1867. And there's a little bit of damage that'll have to be addressed, a little repointing, but nothing serious. Basically, it's in good order. We don't have, because the RFP has not gone out, we don't really know what number we're talking about, but it's somewhere in the vicinity of $100,000. It's a scaffolding operation, and so following the slope is too great to just go in there with a cherry picker and do it that way. So it looks like it'll be scaffolding. So it's a little obtrusive, a little expensive. And I think that's kind of where we stand.
Matt?
I'd just like to add, I comment this from two points. I'm a United States Marine veteran, and I'm a direct descendant of George Linehan, excuse me, Thomas Linehan from Lincoln, who fought in the 32nd Massachusetts. And if you look at that memorial, most of the guys commemorated the 32nd. They were a very hard-hit regiment. George has no known grave. The original pit they were buried in was probably excavated when they deepened the harbor in Charleston, South Carolina. Some of the graves were moved, among them probably the Colonel of the Regiment, who, by the way, when government offered to recover him and bring him to Boston, the family said, no, he stays with his men. George needs to be on that plaque with the rest of the men from Concord. It's that simple. A lot of time, we have sadly, in war, there isn't a war we haven't fought in this country that we haven't had MIAs in, and they don't have graves. This is the way to honor him, and he needs to be honored with the men together. There have been suggestions we could have added him in the, you know, upper corner of the plaque or a separate plaque. No. He was fighting to be integrated with everyone else. He should be with the rest of the veterans of Concord. And I think, yeah, it's going to be worth the money. I think it's something we really, really, really need to do.
So thanks for your presentation, and I now will open it up for questions from the board. Yes.
So thanks for all the work you've done on this and all the research and your diligence in terms of, you know, reviewing and researching to meet the criteria and then making that clear to us as well. I have a question. I'm sure you've already covered this ground and can give me the answer, but as I look at the format of the new plaque with all the names, I assume you've copied the style in terms of how it's laid out from the previous plaque? And I guess my...
I don't know that this is the new one, is it?
Not sure what you have on your screen.
Okay.
So my comment and my question is this, and maybe you've already addressed this, but the format of how this is laid out, I find not as user-friendly and presentable as possibly it could be. And I'm wondering if that's something you've considered. So let me just be very specific. You know, you talk about the regiment, is that the correct term? Yeah. The regiment titles are, looks like centered, and then the names of the individuals are left justified. And if you look at it, I actually read it slightly differently the first time I looked at it, and then I had to go back and realize what I was reading. So I don't know, it's just an observation, and maybe you've already addressed it.
Well, that is the format of the current plaque. And we are trying not to change the format of the current plaque in order to, you know, simply replace it. Tinkering with the format of one of these things, you know, it's one of those things where you can't tug any string and not expect all the others to move around. So we didn't enter into that. But we are working with a good typographer. I think if any adjustment is made, it may be to see if we can make it flush at the bottom. That may be possible, but maybe not. But basically, what we're trying to do is follow verbatim the format of the current plaque. Now, we don't know what the previous plaques looked like, don't know whether they were following the precedent, but this is enough like, I mean, this is a sans serif type, what they call a modern Gothic, and that's what they used in 1915. And this is as close as we could come to the exact typeface that they used. And if you look at the plaque on the other side, these are quite compatible. I would point out, I don't know if it will help the legibility, but when it's in place, the background will be patented, but the faces of the letters will be polished. You can see that that's the way it was originally presented, so that's what we'll do. But I think that's the answer to the formatting question, is it's tricky, and we are, we're trying to avoid it and just go verbatim with what we're looking at now.
So will the, thank you for that explanation. Will the typesetter for the foundry, you know, before it goes to the foundry, will it change the estimate you anticipate to get?
No. No. The cost for the typesetter is already taken care of, actually. It's not a big number, it's not a big part of this. But we have, we are still working with the typesetter and...
So I get, maybe I should have asked it a little bit differently. Is the typesetter and the cost estimate from the typesetter dictating minimal changes, and you have to stay with the original format?
Not at all. Not at all. It is, you know, it's really just to replicate the current plaque.
Okay.
Yeah. The cost of typesetting is negligible. I mean, we could, you know, completely redesign it, but the committee determined not to go that way.
Well, thank you for your explanation. And I respect the committee's decision in terms of, I'm sure you've struggled with this and so forth. I wonder how, how, once people see the new plaque, whether, how many people will actually be in their minds comparing it to the previous plaque in terms of, you know, how the names are lined up and so forth?
Our hope is that people will see the new plaque and not notice that it's changed.
Okay.
Except that the monument's been cleaned.
All right.
If I could just add one more thing. Ideally, we'd like to complete this by Memorial Day of next year, if possible. We think that would be an appropriate time. That's our, the target date. They're, you know, scheduling, scheduling all the work and so forth, something may slide, but the ideal date is next Memorial Day.
And the anticipated source of funds to pay for all this, has that been discussed?
There is an account.
There was $7,000 left by the previous town manager into an account for the project. And then, you know, we could fundraise, if we have to fundraise. I had John Harris create a gift account for us. That is going to push this back at least a year, probably. So if there is money in the town at all, we'd love the town to pay, of course. Who wouldn't? But there is an account, and from what I understand, that donations to a town are tax-deductible on federal taxes. So there is something we could create and do that. But if we are only relying on donations, I don't know how long it will take to raise money. And our quote for the plaque is only good till June 6, because the price of metal is so volatile right now, it's just going to keep going up.
So we also have a source of funds identified. We have approximately $75,000 in a capital account that could be put towards this project.
Now, I've heard a couple of different numbers thrown around, the $25,000 for the plaque itself, but then $100,000 for the cleaning. I wonder if you investigated the Community Preservation Act as a potential source, because historic preservation, you know, is a category of funds, and this seems like the kind of scope of project. Typically, there are in-kind funds, you know, provided by other sources, and it, I think it would be pretty hard to turn this project down from a CPC perspective. You know, there's a town committee that stands and evaluates all the projects, and there are many competing projects, of course, but this is pretty compelling, I'd say.
So...
Sorry. Well...
Wait.
Well, yeah, okay.
So I was just going to suggest Heather Gill is the staff person to the CPC, and she is going to be leaving us soon to, for her second child is going to be born. So if you could get to her immediately, I think she would be an excellent source to make sure that this project would in fact, there's a very specific definition of preservation projects, as you know, and she could help you with that.
Thank you.
So you at least had an indication.
Yeah.
Okay. Before we go to the public, any other comments or questions from board members?
I would like to say, to thank the committee for doing an extraordinary job.
Absolutely.
And I hope at least it's implicit in what they said, that even though they were originally just asked to investigate and to report back to the board, that we ask them to continue the direction and supervision of the project and the, and making the arrangements for having the work done and for dealing with the vendors for the work that's to be done on the project because of the expertise they have on the subject and the ability they have to make sure that it's done properly. In response to the questions about, you know, the design, I think the governing principle was that what is there should look no different from the way it looks now, except for the addition of George Dugan, and it ought to look just the way it would have looked had he been put on the plaque when he should have been put on it.
Thank you. I actually have one other detailed question before making a more general remark. What will happen to the existing plaque?
We haven't, the committee hasn't made a determination. It's not in our charge, I hope.
No, it's not.
But the, it has scrap value on the order of 80 cents a pound, which is negligible. It's only, it's about a quarter inch thick. It isn't metal that the foundry can use. In other words, the, in the 1915, they sold the metal and actually got good money for it, you know, got, I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was about $400 to replace the plaque in 1915, and they got $200 in metal or something like that. Beth's got the exact numbers, but no, no, no.
I always thought that bronze was worth a lot these days, you know?
It is until you try to sell it.
Okay. When you try to buy it, it costs a lot.
You got that right.
Yeah, okay. All right. And then I would just like to thank the Civil War Monument Task Force as well for their work, and in particular, transforming this from what had originally been sort of a nominal acknowledgement of this veteran to now a full inclusion, you know, because originally there was going to be a side plaque or something, and this is, I think, a far better result for the town and just for history's sake. So thank you very much. Now, we did have remarks from the public, so actually I will give the public an opportunity to speak at this time. If so, please, I see a hand raised, so please identify yourself.
Thank you, Matt. Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road, and presently the Chair of the CPC. And I would really urge you to apply to the CPC, and I want to give you a deadline, which is the only reason I'm adding to this very robust, and Linda, thank you very much, commentary, which is that on the 21st of June, an information with the CPC meeting will take place, and that might be a good time to come to the CPC meeting, talk with us about your thoughts and ideas, and we can help you to format an appropriate application. So thank you very much.
And do we have to, any motions that we need to make at this point in time? I don't think so. So thank you very much for your update, and we look forward to your final report. I think we have a draft in the packet, and I also, just given my chair's report, I look forward to future contributions from you all in the future town boards and committees as you're available. Thank you.
Thank you.
David is a member of the 250th Anniversary Executive Committee.
Yes.
And is doing the same splendid work there.
Great work there. Okay.
Thanks very much.
Actually, now I think would be an appropriate time for us to open and continue each of the public hearings, the four grant of location public hearings, because we now have gone past the time where the fourth of them was to have been held. So may I have a motion?
Move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Well, I think we should...
You have to give the chance to continue?
No, I think you'd need to identify, you actually have to state, you have to, I believe, open the specific public hearing, since we have four of them, unfortunately, yes.
Okay. Move to open the public hearing of the grant of location petition by National Grid to relay approximately 470 feet of 2-inch coated steel 1930 gas main from 470 feet of 2-inch plastic in Davis Court from Bedford Street to end at number 47 Davis Court.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to ask to continue this public hearing?
Move to continue the public hearing to June 13, 2022, at 6:40 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Second public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing, grant of location petition by National Grid to relay approximately 250 feet of 4-inch plastic main in Lowell Road with approximately 250 feet of 8-inch plastic main from the existing 8-inch plastic main to house number 925 Lowell Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to continue this public hearing.
Move to continue the public hearing to June 13, 2022, at 6:50 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Move to open the public hearing, grant of location petition by National Grid to extend its existing 2-inch plastic main in Simon Willard Road approximately 480 feet to serve an existing residence located at number 398 Simon Willard Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to continue this public hearing.
Yeah, move to continue the public hearing to June 13, 2022, at 7:00 PM.
Second? Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think for this last one, you just need enough unique identifying information, I would claim. Well, go ahead. Say, read the whole thing. Read the whole thing.
Okay. Move to open the public hearing, grant of location petition by National Grid to relay approximately 805 feet of 2-inch coated steel and approximately 150 feet of 2-inch plastic with approximately 955 feet of 2-inch plastic in Crescent Road, to relay approximately 735 of 2-inch with approximately 735 of 2-inch plastic in Hosmer Road, from the Shoba Road to Crescent Road, and to relay approximately 710 feet of 2-inch coated steel with approximately 710 feet of 2-inch plastic in Garland Road, from Crescent Road to the Shoba Road, and to relay approximately 465 feet of 2-inch coated steel with approximately 465 feet of 2-inch plastic from Wilson Road to the end of Main Street at number 59 Wilson Road, and to relay approximately 860 feet of 2-inch coated steel with approximately 860 feet of 2-inch plastic in the Shoba Road from Hosmer to the end of number 321 the Shoba Road, to relay approximately 480 of 2-inch coated steel with approximately 480 feet of 2-inch plastic in the Shoba Road from Garland to number 144 the Shoba Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to continue this public hearing.
Move to continue the public hearing to June 13, 2022, at 710 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And as it so happens, it is 7:21 PM. So we are able to open the public hearing for the liquor license application. So we are able to open the public hearing for the liquor license application.
Are we going to do Trails End?
We're, yes, I believe so. I don't believe, do, I don't believe we have to have Mr. White present, do we?
No, and he did submit a letter, and I'm happy to read the letter to the record.
So I think we're okay.
Okay. I'll move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Do we, we need to announce the specifics of the public hearing and the motion?
Yes.
Yes, unfortunately.
Liquor license application for a change of doing businesses by Trails End Cafe Limited Liability Corporation located at 97 Lowell Road.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I don't, if there's someone representing the applicant here, please identify yourself on the Zoom. And if not, I will ask our interim town manager, Carrie LaFleur, to read a statement from Mr. White, who is describing the rationale behind this DBA change.
So, the, the letter is dated May 23rd to the Concord Select Board. Trails End Cafe LLC has filed an application to DBA Nosh by Concord Market because it has changed the restaurant's concept. The ownership and management of the restaurant, including the manager for the liquor license, remain the same. Please let me know if you need any additional detail. Signed by James B. White, member, and he sent this because he was unable to be here this evening.
Yes, so do we have any discussion of the application?
I believe we also have a letter from the police chief.
That's right. Well, actually, those letters were for the taxi service and for, and for the Mescalidoid Sportsman's Club. Not for this one. Well, because as noted in the letter, there is no change in personnel or any other details related to this, other than just the name change.
But it's a change of concept, right? The Nosh is different than the Chase and Cafe.
Yes.
And how so, do we know?
Well, they're, I mean, they're both restaurants, different menu, I think, is, is really, and this is just in a conversation that, that I had on this, it's really just changes in the menu.
I mean, we do have the option of continuing this hearing if we feel that we're uncomfortable with this. So it's up to, up to the fellow members. I personally, given that there aren't any other changes in the application, feel, and noting that in fact the business is doing business under that new name, I feel like it's appropriate.
I do as well.
Yes. So, any other?
No.
Questions or concerns? So with that, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve.
We have to close the public hearing?
Oh, let's, oh, sorry, and we should need to ask the public, sure, please close the public. No, do we, yeah, do we have any public comment? If so, please identify yourself and make your comment. I do not see anyone going off of mute. Okay.
Move to close the public hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And then?
Move to approve the request for a change of doing businesses by Trails End Cafe LLC located at 97 Lowell Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and we are just a few minutes early to take up the Mescalidoid Sportsman's Club. So at this time, I would say let's take up the nominations and appointments. You know, Mary, you picked up a great night to be pro tem.
I did, why?
Well, it's a lot of work. And we moved all the agenda items around and everything.
Okay, move to nominate Michael Lawson of 1695 Lowell Road to the Economic Vitality Committee, Burton Flint of 1643 Main Street to the Community Preservation Committee, Diane C. Proctor of 57 Sudbury Road to the Concord 2025 Executive Committee.
Okay, and then I'd just like to make a comment because I did hear a question raised about Mr. Lawson's nomination, and I actually have spoken with Mr. Lawson about this, and he reminded me that the other items that we have listed, one is for the State's Commission for the 250th, so in other words, it's not a town board or committee. And then the other for the Battle Road, he said was actually, at this point, dormant because that Battle Road group was an informal group that was established prior to the towns having their own 250ths, and now that that, those are established, he does not see any future activities for those. So, in effect, he has just one existing committee appointment, which is to the Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, and he is comfortable with taking on a new committee assignment, and if we will make the exception that we have provided for under App 10 to have a member have two, you know, a resident have two committee assignments. So if the board members are okay with that, we would then proceed next week with the appointment.
Do we have to make a specific motion to waive that requirement, or do we just make the appointment acknowledging?
I think we would make the appointment that in effect it acknowledges that, but I wanted to, because the issue had been raised, to at least give voice to that. Okay, so let's go ahead with the appointments.
Did we, did we actually vote on this?
We don't vote on nominations?
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I'm learning. Okay, move to appoint Kristen Haggerty to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission for a term to expire April 30th, 2025, and move to reappoint Steve Ledoux to the Manitman Regional School Committee for a term to expire April 30th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I think, given one minute, we would like to invite the representative from the Mescalidoid Sportsman's Club to come forward, and we will wait approximately 30 seconds to, I don't move that quickly. At these hearings, we have to give them at their noticed times. At about 40 seconds. Anybody got a liaison report that they can do in 40 seconds?
Yes, I went to the NRC, it was the most efficient meeting I've ever been to.
Except for this one.
This isn't done yet.
That was the most efficient liaison report I've ever heard.
Well, you asked for a quick one.
Wow.
Okay, I'll come back to it.
All right.
Okay, can I go? Should I open this public hearing?
Yes, I believe you can.
Okay. I'll move to open the public hearing, liquor license application for multiple amendments, including change of manager and change of officers, directors, LLC managers at Mescalidoid Sportsman's Club, Inc., of 250 Old Mill Road.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I don't think I heard a majority of the board say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So who is representing the Mescalidoid Sportsman's Club today?
My name's Gavin Morrissey, I'm the treasurer of Mescalidoid.
Okay. And tell us what you're up to.
Yeah, we are requesting a replacement of our bar manager. We had someone that was on there for a long time, he wanted, he can't put in as much time as he used to, so we have a newer member who is, works in the distribution business for August Bush Distributors, so he has 30 years of experience with these types of arrangements, so he seems like a perfect person as far as our membership to take on that new role, which he's very willing and happy to do. So that's, I mean, and then we also dropped the number of board members, I'm sorry, that was another thing.
Okay, so I assume this individual with all that experience is tips trained and?
Yes, everybody that does anything in the bar at Mescalidoid has to be tips trained.
And then in terms of hours of coverage and his personal coverage or other coverage for those times?
Are you asking about like approximately?
Like the hours in which the, the Sportsman's Club does serve and, and, you know, his hours relative to that?
Yeah, so during the, I mean, it's an all volunteer type of, so there's no hard kind of schedule that someone has to be, like, no one has a, you know, a time clock or anything, or, you know.
Yeah, right, you're not punching in, punching out.
Right. But, right, it's generally.
I do have, I mean, there normally are some sort of hour.
Yeah, yeah, it's generally, during weeks, it's about 3:30 to 6:30 is our general time where there's any activity, and then weekends, depending upon if they're having an event, you know, a membership kind of event or not.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's only if, there's only a handful of people that have keys to be able to open the bar, so if he's not, if we don't have someone that's tips certified and, well, his name's William, if he's not, he'll approve any kind of bartender shifts, if you will, like when, when we do need someone to cover an event, so that would be part of his role too.
Okay. And do you anticipate any changes in the types of activities or number of activities that you hold?
No.
And how many special activities per year do you typically have on weekends?
I, if I had to make a guess, I would say that there's probably, where the bar is actually being used, probably about 20 throughout the year, where I would say, you know, like there's an event of sorts.
Okay. And then you said that the, the board number of seats is changing?
Yeah, we reduced the number, we're, we limit our membership to 100 members, and it became, with COVID and everything, it became really hard for people to fill. We had 17 with corporate officers and board members, so when one out of every five people is a board member, you know?
Yeah.
We're not IBM, you know, it's like, you know, but, so it just made it, you know, the way people's schedules work is, we thought it was a better move to reduce the number of board members, so that those that really want to be on the board will be more effective.
And so how many will there be going forward?
14, so we're dropping, if you include corporate officers and board members, we're dropping from 17 to 14.
Oh, still a pretty big number.
Yeah, I'd like to get down to 11, but.
Yeah, okay.
It's an old place, and they, they like to move slowly.
Okay.
This was approved by the members, right?
Yeah, the minutes are part of the application where we approve the manager and the, and the reduction of the board members.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Well, as you noted earlier, the police chief did say there was no reason not for this individual to be the manager, so.
Right.
Yeah, we submitted a query and every, the whole background thing, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, any questions from the public? If so, please unmute yourself and identify yourself. I don't see any, anyone unmuting, so could we close the public hearing, please?
I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move to approve, move to approve the request for change of manager for Mescalidoid Sportsman's Club, Inc., of 250 Old Mill Road, and to approve the request for a change of officers, directors, LLC managers by Mescalidoid Sportsman's Club, Inc., of 250 Old Mill Road.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks very much.
That's it?
That's it?
That's not too bad.
We could make it harder.
Can I pretend that I did a lot more work tonight for this?
Go right ahead. So, so we have about four minutes before we can hold our next public hearing. So anyone else with a, with a liaison report that would like to make one?
Well, I could report on the 2025 committee. We've had, we had our second meeting, and we now have, we've nominated an additional member to the board, and we will be considering at least two or three more additional members to the board. We have, we met with the Director of the Minuteman National Park at our last meeting, and so we're coordinating with her. I have also corresponded now with the Select Board of the Town of Lexington and with Mike Lawson in connection with the State Commission. One of the burning questions of the day is, how do we schedule this thing? Because April 19th in 2025 falls on the Saturday between Good Friday and Easter.
Wow.
Oh.
And so we're trying to find out, or we're trying to get together with everybody who is going to be doing these activities around that date, how we're going to handle that situation.
I think rescheduling Easter sounds good.
I asked, I did, I did ask if anybody on the committee knew the Pope.
Yeah.
And nobody felt that they knew him well enough. And then David actually said that by, there was a, there was a, a synod in the early first millennium which prohibited the change of the date of Easter.
Okay, I think we're probably done on that one, then.
Yeah, okay, so we are now working on scheduling and, scheduling and prioritizing activities, and we have, that's what we'll be talking about on this Thursday, strong in, a strong interest in forming subcommittees so that the, the detail work can start as soon as possible. So that's where we are, and we're meeting weekly, and the meetings have been very constructive.
Okay, thanks very much.
Henry, who, who will you be looking to in terms of trying to figure out how to schedule?
Who are we?
The state, the federal, both?
Everybody, because, I mean, I, I think that it's, I think it's up in the air for everybody right now, for, at least for those who have thought about it. I know that there will be people who are very committed to the value of the date itself, April 19th, but if you also want to have people from very far, from not local participate, my guess is that most people will want to be back home for Easter, and so you can, you know, it would, I think it will shape the event in many ways if we try to have it on that Saturday, so we've got to figure out how to make that work. And it may be, first of all, our, our idea, I think, is very similar to what the National Park is planning, is to have a series of events during that whole year. And so if we're, we're having various events starting in the beginning or maybe even earlier, in my mind, I was even thinking about having events that were tied to the anniversary dates of various events like the Boston Massacre, the Boston Tea Party, and so on, things that happened on various dates, but in different years still.
It gets pretty busy, starting by 2024, there are a lot of things that happen.
So, any, yeah, so.
150 years before.
So I think if there are events that are spread out over a period of time, it may be possible to have something that is symbolic on the 19th, but maybe not the major conglomeration of people in one place, so.
Which could have a silver lining.
Everything does.
Yeah.
So, anyway, this, you know, even though the last time this was done, it took seven years, I'm a great believer in Parkinson's Law.
Parkinson's Law?
The work expands to fill the time available to accomplish it.
You were just talking about that.
Huh?
We were just talking about that, yes, it does.
So maybe today we can do in three years, because we have three years, but that took eight years to do 50 years ago.
Yeah.
So we'll see.
Okay. Well, speaking of that, we're now at 7:40.
That was my main purpose, was to, was in a.
And so I would like to call forward the applicant for the taxi or library license for Concord Limo Services, if we have anyone here available, or anyone on the Zoom who can present. Do we have someone?
I'm here on Zoom.
Okay, could you please? Yeah, identify yourself and your role with the organization?
My name is Benissa Botry. I'm the owner of the Concord Limo Services, Concord Limo Services LLC.
Okay, thank you. And your location within Concord is?
I have my office in one thirteen Peter Spring Road in Concord.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So could you describe the service that you're expecting to provide?
So it's a it's a limousine service. And direct to the airports, to the city, back from the airport to Concord. And and if there is a local, a local, like, you know, business, I will, I will, I will do it. But I don't say I've been doing business for almost since two thousand fifteen as, but now I'm taking it to a different level by registering my business. So I haven't had any any local like pickups and and drop offs, but I'm willing to do that as well.
Okay, thank you. And are you the sole driver for this organization?
I I ordered about about ten cars. And from the from the Chevy Chevy dealer, they keep changing the dates. For for me, every time they I have one car right now that it's it's on the on the business. And I'm ordering another ten cars, so.
Oh, okay. Now, on your application, you'd stated that and all you said was not in Concord, which is an unusual response. Do you have a location that you expect that they will be steward?
All the drivers, they're gonna keep their cars, the cars they're driving, wherever they live. And they all live in in the area of Boston, the Everett and Chelsea and and River area. So no cars will be parked here at all.
I see. Questions from the board members? Yes, Linda.
So can you just say again what you what kind of coverage you would provide locally besides going into Boston and back? If any, if any.
I I know, as I said, I've been doing business as for for since two thousand fifteen. I never had like a local pickup here in Concord. But as I said, if okay, if my clients here requested a ride here locally, I'm willing to do it. Besides beside like, you know, beside going to the airport and to the city or to anywhere else in the in the area. So.
It did seem like you had a dollars per mile type of a model that you so that would apply then for someone who wanted to go to a different destination?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Any comments from town staff? I know that we did have a background check completed by the police and they found no issues. So.
I don't think we have any comments. I know. I know Mike Gibbons is also on the call.
I guess I do have one question, which is, I I believe that one thirteen Peter Spring Road is a residential district. And so normally we would have, you know, an accessory use special permit for running a business out of your residential site. If there's any aspect that's local, you know, like if, I mean, a lot of times it's if there are customers coming. But if there's any parking requirements whatsoever, you know, your driver's coming and going during the day. And so this this that may be something to note. I don't know that it would necessarily get in the way of this application. But I do think that it's something worth bringing up with the building commissioner. Yep. Oh, okay, we're gonna hear from our town executive assistant.
Hi, everybody. My name is Michael Gibbons. I'm the senior administrative assistant in the town manager's office. In regards to the building commissioner, he has reviewed the application and signed off on it.
Okay, so he doesn't believe that they need a accessory use
That is correct.
in this case.
Correct.
Okay.
So a related question I have to this is that, you know, we have many people who are running businesses out of their own home. And is there an application that's required for that purpose?
I I believe there is. For a home occupation, correct.
Yeah.
So I'm wondering if this also qualifies for that in addition.
So, yeah, so they wouldn't be seeing clients at their house needing to provide parking for clients like a piano teacher or things like this. But there is still this aspect of a business use of the residence.
But I assume if the building inspector has reviewed the application, if he thought a special permit were required, he would have said so.
But is the home occupation a building? I don't think.
Yeah, I'm not talking about a special permit. This is something different. It's for people who are running businesses out of their own home.
That's a special permit for for a home occupation. It doesn't involve building, but I mean, it is subject to the building department deciding whether or not you need a permit from the Board of Appeals, I believe, for a home or perhaps decides that it is such an occupation that doesn't require a permit.
Well, and and the service is not provide being provided in the home, right?
Right. So I can tell you from past experience that I had business in town and I was required to to fill an application out, did not require people coming to my home.
Okay.
And was that through the town clerk's office? Is that what you're speaking of or?
I quite frankly, don't remember what office that was through.
I think I think I think.
It was a requirement in Concord.
I I think the home occupation permit process has been liberalized in recent years.
It is the building department here. I'm just looking at the application.
The home occupation?
Yeah. So it sounds like that the building inspectors looked at it.
He signed off on it.
Okay.
Okay. So then the only other question I have, not necessarily for you, Mike, but is for the applicant, the one car that you mentioned. You said will not be housed in Concord, but where would it be housed?
It's gonna be with a driver.
So you're not the driver in that?
No, no, I'm not. And I'm gonna be, I'm working on a on a website where I'm just gonna be home and managing the website where, you know, the, you know, you know, just, you know, booking, you know, reservation and all that. That's what I'm gonna do.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, are we ready for a motion?
We've got to.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I should be asking for a public comment. So I see the first hand is from Tanya. Could you make your public comment, please?
Hi, sure. No, just 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 wanted.
And identify yourself.
Of course, Tanya Gailis sixty two Prescott Road. I just, I just want to confirm that this is not an application from our neighbor in terms of increasing any kind of traffic in the in the, yeah. I I just want to confirm that I'm understanding it correctly, that it's an it's a matter of them managing the business from their residence and not necessarily having a taxi.
It sounds like unless the client is in your neighborhood, the car would not go there.
Thank you. Just wanted to just wanted to confirm that. Thank you very much.
Okay, and then I see another hand up. Could you please identify yourself?
Hi, everyone. My name is Karen Byrne. I'm the senior admin for the Concord Board of Health and the Health Division. And I happen to work side by side with the building department. And your question about the application for a home occupation, that is only if you're doing paperwork or doing business as. I think that's where the town manager was speaking about the town when the town clerk gets involved. So it's not a special permit, the home application, but this gentleman may have to get that if he's running like the computer website. I just wanted to.
Because it does.
To know the answer. So I thought I would share that. Okay.
Okay, thank you. So I think that's a follow up item, and I think it's independent of the taxi application as far as I'm concerned. So I would just encourage you to follow up on that. So now are we ready to close the public hearing? So.
It wasn't really a public hearing, but that's okay.
It isn't?
No.
Oh. Thought that it it had a time certain.
Okay, it wasn't a.
The Board of Health?
No, this this application.
So are we going to?
So it's not a public hearing, so we just need a motion.
So are we gonna state the motion with the condition that?
I think that makes sense.
Yes.
So with the condition that the applicant apply for a.
For a home occupation special permit.
Okay, I move to approve the application for a livery license for Concord Limo Services of one hundred and thirteen Peter Springs Road with the condition that the applicant files for a home business. What is it?
Home occupation special permit.
Home occupation special permit.
Do I have a sec?
I have a question. I.
Yes?
Yeah, I think I applied for that from the from the from the building department already. It's not in the application.
I didn't think I saw it.
There may be some confusion here because there's a conversation about the town clerk. The town clerk, that's that is a doing business certificate.
Right, we have a business certificate from Concord Limo. That's great.
Which is just a fictitious name certificate, which in other words, if you're doing business in the town of Concord as a LLC or a corporation, that files with the town clerk, the identity of the resident who is the principal of that business. But it's a ten dollar or five dollar certificate that's totally, it's there's no approval process. It's just a fee.
Business certificate. But I also wonder if home occupation isn't necessary if we're actually granting the library business. You know, permit, because effectively it's it's a broader permit.
Right. And and I think what Mike said is that we have some documentation from the building commissioner that that no other permit is required for this operation. Unless I misunderstood what he said.
Oh, look, hold it. Sorry, the applicant's correct. There is a home occupation application here in our packet.
Right.
Okay, so I believe that
We're gonna withdraw that.
We need to withdraw our motion.
Okay.
So could you move to withdraw?
Move to approve the application for a livery license for Concord Limo Services of one hundred and thirteen Peter Spring Road, period.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
Okay. All right.
Notice we failed to throw up one more obstacle to conduct a business in the town of Concord.
Okay, so now we're ready for an update from the Board of Health regarding the mosquito spraying in Concord. And so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck with the business.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I'm gonna drop some business card down there.
Okay, all right.
Hi, good evening. My name is Dr. Deborah Green. I'm a member of the Board of Health. And on Zoom, we have Melanie Deneen, as you may know, is our new public health director for the town. And I think she will start us off with an update on mosquito control and triple E prevention.
Okay, thanks very much. I got my first mosquito bites this past week, so I'm very.
All right. Thank you. My name is Melanie Deneen. I just wanted to give you a brief update. Concord is a member of the East Middlesex Mutispeak Mosquito Control District. That is helps us with our mosquito surveillance and monitoring program. Currently in Concord, we start treating with a larva side on June first, our catch basins and some of our wet areas. We do have an opportunity for ditch inspection and maintenance as needed. In two thousand nineteen, when we did have a triple E in Sudbury case, the mosquito control board worked with Concord to have some ground level spraying for mosquitoes. Let's see if I can. New this year. The EEA is giving an opportunity for municipalities to opt out of aerial spraying. This is the State Mosquito Control Board. The aerial spraying happens only when there is a risk of a health hazard. So when DPH through this mosquito surveillance decides or determines that there's been positive cases of triple E or West Nile, and there's an elevated risk because of identification mosquitoes or animals with disease. In the event that there is this elevated risk, participation in this state recommendation mosquito control board will make us have a quicker and more reactive response to this public health risk. Due to past data and information on the ongoing mosquito surveillance, Concord is actually in a high risk category for the threat of triple E or West Nile. Dr. Green, did you want to take it from here?
Sure. So the Board of Health met on May seventeenth and agreed that unanimously that we should not opt out of this opportunity, meaning that we would want the state to provide aerial spraying if there was a feeling that there was a high risk to humans, a hazard to humans, and that risk would not be mitigated by personal protection or ground spraying. And just to recap, eastern equine encephalitis is extremely rare. In fact, you know, many people who get infected with this have have no or minimal symptoms. But a small percentage of people who do develop symptoms, the fatality rate is quite high and virtually no one survives the disease if they develop symptoms neurologically intact. So it's a very devastating but rare disease. And we felt that this was in, you know, a low risk way to help mitigate the risk to our population should we have increased surveillance of mosquitoes and in animal or human cases. So we asked the select board. So the Board of Health voted to not opt out and we present that to the select board.
Okay. Comments from select board members?
I have a question. If the state were to spray, will we be notified so that people can protect themselves if they don't want to be out when this is happening?
A couple of, yes, a couple of things. The state would notify us if they are going to proceed with aerial spraying. The aerial spraying typically occurs between the hours of seven PM and four AM when most people aren't out and about. And it's done by helicopter with, you know, mapping of knowing where they're going and so forth. So.
But I guess would would it be available on the town's website so that some people are out at night, so that we would know locally?
I I think once we made a determination or heard that the state was gonna spray, we would have to put that information out in any way possible on the state website. I mean, on the town website. You know, a reverse nine one one call kind of situation. I mean, yeah.
Okay, other questions?
In that same vein, I'm wondering if it would be possible to notify the restaurants who have outdoor seating specifically?
We can do that.
Any other questions? My questions I've heard, you know, in the past are, first of all, if there's any kind of side effects on pollinators. And then secondly, you know, any effect of the spraying on, you know, soil, groundwater, those kinds of things, you know, forever chemicals, lots of other sort of environmental considerations. I mean, recognizing that this is, you know, potentially serious. And then finally, the just the loss of insect populations generally, you know, in terms of an environmental impact.
I should add, I was present during the discussion at the Board of Health. Waiver doesn't mean that you can just avoid treatment. The town has to come up with an alternative.
Yeah.
Has to come up with an alternative plan to prevent the disease. Has to come up with an alternative plan to prevent the disease.
Right.
So that if we wait, if we, if we did, if, if we did make the waiver, we would then have to develop a treatment plan, and, you know, that would also have consequences as well.
Okay.
But just to alleviate some of your concerns, the, the product that is used is something called Anvil 10-10, and it is, uh, two chemicals, but one of them is, is commonly used as sort of pet shampoos and flea and tick powder, so. And the, the, the product is dispersed as a very, very fine aerosol. And the way that it works is that it's such a tiny, tiny droplet that it really only affects the mosquitoes, the tiny insect, whereas its effect on sort of larger insects such as honeybees would not be, felt to be a risk for the, the larger insects. This compound, this product breaks down readily in sunlight and decomposes, so it's not a forever chemical. So it's, it's very specific to mosquitoes. It, it is not going to be a forever chemical in our system and our groundwater. And, you know, it, it has been shown to be effective.
Okay, thank you.
One more thing in addition. There's a lot of great information on the CDC and the Massachusetts Department of Public Health website. There's an information sheet about aerial spraying, and so it's, has information about what people who have, for example, keep bees or have like a koi pond in their backyard, what they can do during the night time, during that time. So we will get the message out if it comes to it, and the, the town should have adequate time to prepare.
I've got a follow-up, can you say if it comes to it? How likely is it?
Well, triple E is generally seen in cycles every 10 to 20 years. It lasts for a few years. So we did see this in 2019 and 2020. We didn't see it in 2021. The epidemiologists and infectious disease experts aren't really quite sure why. I think it, it, it's in our best interest to be prepared for it again this year and potentially next year. Maybe we'll get lucky and, and we just had a two-year cycle, but it, it, you know, we would expect it.
Um, I think this might be a good time to ask for any comments from the public. So if you are attending and you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your name and address. Yes, I see, Tanya.
Hi, yes, Tanya Gaila, 62 Prescott Road. Is there any way to consult with the Natural Resources Department about any undesirable ecological effects of this? Because it's not necessarily just insect size. I mean, sometimes smaller insects matter too, or it does affect birds and. And, and there are probably ways of controlling mosquitoes that the town could implement, at least initially, that do not necessarily involve spraying. I'm just, I'm just saying that it might be a good measure to, to, to check with experts of, in ecology that we have in town as well. Thanks.
Thanks for your comment. Anyone else with a comment? Seeing no one else wanting to speak, I just, I think it's time for us to move to deliberations among the board.
We don't, I don't think we need a motion, we don't need to approve this, it's.
The Health Department, it's.
Exactly.
But I thought it was, okay, being brought, being brought to us.
Yes, we're being informed.
Okay. All right, then, thank you very much for your update.
Thank you, it's nice to talk about something other than COVID, so.
And thank you for coming, thank you for coming in person, I really appreciate that.
Absolutely, it's nice to see you all.
Thank you.
All right. So now, the, really the remaining item of consequence is to try to finalize and vote upon our 2022 to 2023 select board goals. Three weeks ago, we reviewed an initial draft. In that time, since then, I've asked folks to send a list of their top 10 goals, and also to provide me with any feedback, you know, comments or suggested changes. I did hear from Terry and from Linda. I believe that actually the review draft might have already included Terry's remarks, which she sent right on the spot. Linda's, I have received, and I can just quickly review. And so.
You got my top 10.
I, and I got the top 10, yep, we'll get to the top 10 in a minute.
Sorry, sorry.
Actually, Linda, could you go ahead and, and walk through your three comments? I think one was the evaluation of the town manager.
It was. Under A1, it says identify, hire, permanent town manager. And I was just wondering if we wanted to amend it to say incomplete evaluation?
At the, at the, at the completion of the first year term, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And, okay. Sounds fine, I mean.
I wouldn't even, I would just consider that a routine function.
Well, and I also, I also wanted to mention that the, at least the draft contract that we have makes provisions for an annual evaluation. So it is embedded within the contract, and we would be in violation of the contract if we did, in fact, did not conduct our, our annual evaluation.
And I assume that as well. It's just explicitly, this is one of the key responsibilities of the select board members, so I just was making an explicit for everybody.
Okay, well, we do have other responsibilities, right?
Yeah, of course, so.
Okay.
The other.
I, I actually think that what, what might be very material here, though, is to identify the form of the town manager's evaluation and, and get agreement with the town manager and then conduct that evaluation. I think that that's really what's likely to be new.
When would we be doing this, wouldn't it?
So.
It would be a different board, wouldn't it?
Well, there will be a lot of the same members.
That's true.
Hopefully.
We hope.
Well, there's only one that's gonna be up for election. So, yeah, I think there's gonna be a lot of similarity to this board. And so, so maybe just the rephrasing for item one, A1, identify and hire a permanent town manager. You know, determine the form of the annual evaluation and conduct that evaluation at the end of the, the first year's term.
Do you want me to continue?
Yes.
On D4, where we talk about reviewing the 250th Anniversary Executive Committee's work, I, I was just wondering if we wanted to insert somewhere, receive quote, we were, I believe it was this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Henry, I think the charge says that we.
I won't, I won't correct you if you're right.
I believe the charge said that we were to receive a report at the end of 60 days, I believe it was. And then I'm wondering if we also subsequently received quarterly, at least quarterly reports at select board meetings, as opposed to written reports I was looking more for.
I'd be happy to give you reports as often as you want them, probably more often. I said I would be happy to get you reports as often as you want them.
Well, okay, but I think that we'll just put that minimum criterion of, so, right now, it says, review 250th Anniversary Executive Committee's proposed theme, scope, budget, and organizational structure of events celebrating the 250th Anniversary of the American Revolution. Set goals and milestones and receive, this is what you're suggesting, and receive their six-month report, right?
The charge said, the first one, 60 days, as I recall.
Okay.
And then, I'm just saying subsequently.
Their, their reports as identified in the charge?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then subsequently, have these quarterly reports to the select board?
Oh, so, sorry. Receive their initial report and subsequent four quarterly reports, okay? All right.
Just because the pace is gonna pick up here, even though we're, so, I think we're, we need to be very aware, I guess.
All right. Okay.
And then on F1, which deals with economic vitality.
Yes.
It states, um, specific, excuse me. Encourage the establishment and success of local businesses by taking concrete actions such as hiring an Economic Development Director. I'm wondering if we want to say, such as evaluating the feasibility for an economic director?
Because I wasn't sure we were, the budget included, actually hiring.
Well, I thought that the such as is, gave us the possibility of not doing it, but, yeah.
And I think this also covers the formulation.
Such as considering this year or something.
I, you know, I have trouble having as a goal examining the feasibility of doing something. I think that the goal should be doing it.
Well, or deciding not to.
Or just whatever, yes.
Yeah. So I think it's deciding whether to hire, how about that?
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
Okay?
That's good.
I mean, I agree, ideally, we would.
And I, and I, I, I think that that's a decision that's, I think is a very, there's a very important element of that decision is a cooperative venture between the town manager and the board.
Okay. I would actually say, taking concrete actions and then colon deciding, as opposed to such as. Because now, that makes it specific that we will decide whether, okay?
Hopefully.
Okay. Other input?
I just have two other quick ones here. Under G, regional and state interests.
Yes.
Number five, it says meet with Concord's representatives in statewide 250th commission. And I do believe we also said to him that we wanted to see him quarterly, have an update quarterly, at least quarterly.
Right, okay. I'll just add the word quarterly after commission.
Yep. And I wasn't sure, the regional part, in the ad hoc battle road group, is that the one that Mike just?
That's the one he said that, yeah, so I would just suggest that we cut that half.
Okay.
Okay, so we just end the sentence with the word quarterly. Okay?
And then, under G2, continue to work with our state legislative representatives on the various home rule petitions. And I believe that we have timed out on D, which is the eight, Article 18, 17-year-olds.
So we would need to put that back before town meeting?
I believe so, if in fact that's what we wanted to do. I did check with Senator Barrett's office, and his chief staff person said that the home rule petitions are good for two consecutive sessions, so.
This one would be just timing out.
Yeah, this is timed out.
So that would be a question back to the board, then. Do we want to put forward this 17-year-old vote again for 2023 town meeting?
I don't see that as an initiative that, coming from us as a board.
Yeah, I think it was.
And, and so, so I think that that might be the appropriate. So that might be the appropriate way for it to come back to us. So we would just strike to D?
D.
Yes, just strike it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I had one last one, sorry. Well, actually, we all received some comment on the sustainable infrastructure, and that was in our previous board goals. And I'm wondering if there is a way to highlight continuing to, you know, support the town's climate action plan or, and other sustainable infrastructure goals? That would be in addition, I, I, because I don't see an easy place for that to. There is something, E is sustainable infrastructure, so.
Right.
That would be the section it would give.
You know, I, this is where I struggle a little bit, because there, there are sort of two issues at play here. One is that I really want the goals to be what we, at least in the private sector, call smart goals, which are, they're specific, they're measurable, they're actionable, they're reasonable, and they're time-bound, right? And so, you know, just to make a general statement about supporting sustainability or something doesn't really pass muster. The second thing is that we do have two sustainability-focused town committees. And, you know, we have the Climate Action Advisory Board, and we have the. CSAC. So I would hope to get proposals from them for things for us to implement personally, rather than us.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
So, so, you know, and the other way that things could come to us is of course through the citizen petitions, which is why we have number four on there. Okay, so that's, I mean, I do agree that this plan is very light on the sustainability front, and I wish it was stronger, but I also don't know, for us as a board, you know, what concrete action we would want to take this fiscal year.
No, it's a point well taken, and the, the climate action plan does have specific areas.
Yes.
But it would be helpful if they brought specific goals to our attention.
Any other comments or input for the, the goals document? Well, actually, I should mention that I received today from Henry a sort of, a, a different take on the, the top 10 prioritization, which was in effect, a rephrased set of 10 goals. Some of which consolidated goals that we had in the plan here, others that were new. It just came in this afternoon, so I have, you know, it was too late to include in the packet. And I, I don't know really quite how we would want to, you know, consolidate that input into this document. My own, what I did attempt to do was to review those proposed goals and try to align as much as possible the input with prioritizations of the, of this document, and shared that back with Henry. So I don't know if you want to.
I think, I think you were very creative.
Okay. All right.
And, I mean, to the extent that, that those 10 priorities are important to me, I think they will, I would hope that I, they would influence the board, but I don't, I, I don't expect that the board would adopt them as its own priorities, except to the extent that they agree with the, except for the one really critical one, which is, our meetings will always adjourn at 8:30.
That gives us 10 more minutes to conclude.
It gives us 15 minutes.
Okay. So, the next thing is to actually evaluate our top 10 goals. So I did get lists of top 10 goals from everybody, if you include the interpretations that I made of Henry's. And so now I can, and unfortunately, I'm not connected to the Zoom. I should connect to the Zoom so that I can share these. Just a second. I can share what those top 10 goals were, because just to give you codes is not a very fun way to do this. Hey.
Send it to me, I think I can connect in here.
I'm gonna join without computer audio. Okay. So now if I share a screen, share the spreadsheet, first of all. So you're seeing now, these were the votes, and I think the reason to bring this up just in this form, before I go to the actual document, is to show that there's a great deal of consensus among the board. So we had. So we had, you know, the goal, the very first goal about identifying and hiring a permanent town manager got the most votes. And I think Henry's assertion is just that we're already done, so why use up a vote on that one? But actually, I'd say we're not done. We still are in contract negotiations.
But that's only theoretical.
Well, and also we have now elaborated that goal to include the evaluation process and and I think that it will be something that we will keep looking at through the year. Now, let me move instead to I'll stop sharing and I will move to the document itself because I've now highlighted these priority goals in context so that I think will help people see what we mean by priority goals. So now I see hopefully people are able to see the document. And the.
Can't even see the screen.
Yeah, let me let me try to zoom in a little bit. Let's see if I can do. To 200%. That should help. Okay, so the the very first one, as I said, was identified as a priority and.
So if you can just read off the.
Yeah, so the first three that are priority goals, identifying and hiring a permanent town manager as well as a, you know, determining the form of the evaluation and conducting that evaluation. Second was to identify departmental goals and review progress with the town manager at the beginning and the end of the fiscal year, so we should be teeing that up. Third is to evaluate the recommendations of the personnel bylaw study task force and propose the future charge of the personnel board.
So these are ones that were given a priority by any one of us?
No, so no, they were ones that actually had three. So it's actually a majority of the board identified them as a top 10 goal.
But selected from the preexisting list, which was essentially last year's list re, you know.
Refreshed.
Refreshed, yes. So it wasn't like it was it wasn't really any editorial.
Well, there was some. There are certainly new items in this list versus last year.
So but you were essentially asking people to pick among the ones that were on the list, pick the ones that they favored the most.
Yes. So there are three in that governance section. None under financial stability, though clearly financial stability is a big concern. Then under diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging, work with the DEI Commission to research and implement diversity, equity, inclusion, best practices in town governance, listen to diverse voices in the community, and assess which DEI actions the select board should take.
These all got three votes.
Yes.
Sense to me.
So C3?
Yes, they got three votes.
Mary is wondering.
Out of four people.
Out of five people.
So you put Henry somehow you incorporated Henry's priorities.
I I went back and forth with him when he provided his his 10 goals. There were well, so first thing was anything with less than two votes would not make the top 10 at that point. So if he were and there were eight things that had two votes, if he picked six out of those eight, that would create 10 with at least three votes. See, so that's how we got that. All right.
However, without.
The late late date where I got his feedback because, you know.
But without any particular one, especially I did raise the question about how certain things that we had done absolutely nothing on could be somehow become our top top 10 priority, but that's another issue.
Well, I think if you're commenting about so.
End up with not just 10?
Yes, they're 10. So the next is evaluating whether to implement the residential exemption to reduce the real estate tax burden on less affluent homeowners.
What's the number for that?
That is C5.
C5, thank you. Okay.
Then D3, determine next steps relative to Estorbrook Trail access based on the land court's anticipated ruling.
I don't even know why this is a goal. It's going to happen. Sorry.
Well, we have to determine next steps. Yeah.
Yeah, of course, we're going to do this. It's almost silly to have it as a goal. The judge is going to rule aggressively. We can't do that because it's not.
It's a priority. It's going to be a priority.
But something that's it's like it's like saying gravity is a priority.
Of course, we're going to react to that.
All right.
I guess I'm struggling with.
Well, it could be nine if you wish. Okay, then review the 250th anniversary executive committee work. And then under sustainable infrastructure, sponsor a townwide transportation study and then review the town wireless communication policies. And then finally, under economic vitality, to promote the establishment and success of local businesses by taking concrete actions like, okay? I mean, there are 10 there are 10 things and out of probably about 40, you know, 45. Last year there were 60. Okay, so.
And and that's a big improvement that there are that there are fewer. But also my comment and things like the transportation, I I'm more comfortable with having a goal which says establish a transportation system rather than study the feasibility of.
It's just that it's not really in our power.
It's 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 closer to being in our power if we say we're going to do it than if we say we're going to study it.
Okay. By the way, there I just counted. There are 39 goals listed this year. So out of 39, we've got 10 priority goals. I think that's a reasonable subset.
And does that how does that change?
I mean, the idea is that the end of the year, we should look back and we should assure ourselves that we've done the top 10 and that of the others, we should try to do as many as we can. That would be my interpretation.
And the real value of an exercise like this is the conversation we're having now about what should go on the list. That's probably the most valuable part of the conversation.
Yeah, and I actually wanted to note on this that A5, evaluate town council and labor council performance and decide upon future appointments. I reviewed the town council bylaw, which states pretty clearly that the selection of town council is in the purview of the town manager and that we merely ratify that selection. So or prove that selection. So I don't know if this is phrased quite the right way. It kind of overstates what we do. You know, it's the town manager evaluates that performance, so.
I think we could presume so.
Well, I think I would say maybe we should rephrase A5 to to say, you know, to.
Provide input to.
Provide input to the yes, to the town manager's evaluation of.
Yes.
Okay.
How about participate actively? We will anyway, whether whether it's our goal or not.
And and side. Okay. That's all right. So I'm hoping then at this point, we can come to agreement on on this as our set of goals for the for the coming year.
Can you give me the last three again, please?
The last three priority goals? So the last three priority goals were E1, E3, and F1.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll call out bingo at any moment. Let's see. I guess, you know, might as well, I could ask for public comment at this time. If there's anyone that has a public comment on this goals process before we vote upon our goals, please unmute yourself and identify yourself. I see Tanya.
Yes, hi. Thank you for taking comments and thank you for considering my letter, even though it was only sent today. I had that had a chance to look over the draft before about my comments that something about natural preservation be included among the sustainability goals. I would like to say that, you know, Matthew mentioned something about smart ID smart goals or something. It's 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 not unsmart to just put it there. I I'm a little bit worried that it's being dropped off from what used to be in select board goals. And and it is something to keep in mind, even even if we do have other sustainability committees, even they need to be sometimes reminded that it is not all about alternative energy sources, but also about nature based solutions. And it just would be nice to have the select board state that as something to keep in mind as a valid sustainability approach. So not even just a sustainability, but mention nature based solutions or natural preservation. So that's that's what I wanted to request that you reconsider. You mentioned that other committees take care of like like this is CSAC and the Climate Action Advisory Board that they do give recommendations. On the other hand, you do have their goals, other goals that other committees are already considering, such as the transportation goal that stands out, but there are others. So that's not really a contradiction either. But thank you very much again for.
Thank you. So I also see Pamela Drit with your hand raised. Could you identify yourself?
Pamela Drit, 13 Concord Green. I appreciate the hard job you guys have. But you're the overview that looks at how the different the different town committees implements the will of the town, right? So you need to to be the ones that integrate what we do with sustainability via the schools, via the planning board, what we do with building, what what we can do to work within the the laws to make Concord survive climate change, right? Do do your goals have cross board implementation financially for things that benefit the town financially but don't benefit the the group that has to take the expense, for instance, electrifying the school bus fleet?
Thank you. I see Mark Galis with the hand up.
Thank you very much. Yeah, Mark Galis, 62 Prescott Road. I just want to add sort of as a perspective, maybe to keep in mind that item E is a sustainable infrastructure, maintaining the infrastructure we have is a very important priority and, you know, needs wide support because it's costly. But I also want to point out a certain perspective that item D mentions historic and cultural heritage, mentions agriculture, Concord's unique character. And I would say that the infrastructure that we live on planet Earth and the natural environment is an important part of infrastructure, more basic than the manmade infrastructure that we and we depend on it. So it shouldn't be sort of something that's considered to be an aesthetic or a nice thing to have. It's an essential thing to preserve the natural infrastructure that we depend on. And then I would just add one more thing to that, that I think that the historic and cultural heritage is a historic and educational infrastructure that's very important in this town for many people. So when we think about infrastructure, I think we need to think not only about the the manmade and new things we might build, but also about what we've been gifted with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Funny that he should say that because one of the items that was on my list, which I think is not reflected in the other goals, was to maintain and enhance the recognition and support of the patriotic historical, cultural, and civic heritage of the town of Concord.
Well, I I think that the I mean, again, we're always working towards these kinds of principles and I hopefully within each lettered section at the beginning, we've identified the principles that are behind this. But the special thing that we are doing this year relative to that as a board is D4, right, which is, you know, getting this executive committee off the ground, getting those goals and milestones for it. It's the particular project we're doing this year. And I do think that like we have a climate action plan for the town that is cross functional, right? And and really, we we probably should be reviewing that plan and ensuring that it we are moving ahead. But we have the Climate Action Advisory Board, whose explicit charge is first of all to promulgate that plan, but second of all, to operationalize it. And I I did attend a meeting this past week, I mean, sort of slipping into liaison reports now, where they were talking about the the funding process for, you know, how Ithaca, New York, for example, spending like $100 million, they have a fund for greening the infrastructure, you know, and and big ideas like that that are potentially doable, but they're not before us as a select board this year for implementation.
I would say that that they are in one way where we have a sustainability director whose job we we hired to break down some of these stove pipes within the town. And we're going to review the goals for every department. That's one of our goals, right? So don't we have a.
So that is in effect built into A2.
Right, so.
And in fact, you know, just this evening or this afternoon, we received a memo from the sustainability director weighing in on what we could do relative to these natural gas grant of location applications.
That's right. That's right.
Right? So that is an example of the cross functional sustainability actions.
I think the problem is is just because something's not on our list of goals doesn't mean it's not happening.
Or that nothing's going to happen. Right.
So and I think it is happening and we will, again, when we review the goals for the sustainability director, we'll have direct input.
Okay.
So this is going to make me popular with my colleagues around the table. You know, one of the things I questioned as I looked at some of these goals and now when I hear a priority is how many times does the residential exemption have to come before the select board where we take time to discuss it and look at it? And we've done that for three years in a row already. So, you know.
I don't think we have. I think what we've heard is we've heard the recommendation from the board of assessors and we've taken that recommendation because I've been watching closely. And for two years in a row, what we've done is we've taken their recommendation and that's it, as opposed to realizing that they are not a policy making board. They're they're a board of assessors. And I think we've got a responsibility as the board of selectmen to make policy. And I so I would like to look at it again in the context of is this a policy we want to do as opposed to.
I would say that most of what you said is I would agree with is accurate. The one thing I would add to it, however, is that there has been deliberation when we have been presented with their recommendations about the impact, for example, on renters or the impact on segments of that are lower income in town and so forth. So we haven't just sat here and listened to a recommendation. We've actually, I think, taken the time to discuss some of the ramifications.
Yeah, but we have had new input since then. So for example, the Tax Fairness Committee, which we had running, that then we dissolved. But one of their sort of closing recommendations was.
To look at it again.
To look at it again.
And we have new people on the board.
And we didn't have $100 million bond financing in front of us.
Say that again, Henry.
I said, we did also in previous consideration of this, we did not have $100 million plus bond issue in front of us that would have a substantial tax impact if there were not some other method of dealing with it's a fact.
We we certainly have known it was coming to almost to to the to that. We, we certainly have known it was coming to, almost to, to the, to that level over the last couple of years. So even though it wasn't officially voted on until more
I think what we're hearing is we've got new voices now in the conversation.
I hear that. I hear that. I, I told you, I was, this is going to make me popular with my colleagues. But I, I wanted to raise that because we've been questioning about why this, you know, this goal, we shouldn't even have this on here, or, you know, whatever.
I admire your courage.
The object of being, the object of being on this board is not to be popular.
I agree.
Okay. All right.
That's not why we were elected.
To bring the conversation back to the topic at hand. And what I would like to do is to see if we can vote to approve these goals for 2022 to 2023 term as amended this evening. And I'd be happy to bring the document back up on the screen if there are any question marks. But I do believe that I've implemented the changes that Linda suggested.
And with the priorities.
And with the priorities identified that we
What about Terry's changes?
Terry's changes are already incorporated. Yeah. They, they were in the draft that went out because she, like I said, was lickety-split after the last meeting.
And Henry, you feel that you, yours were the most part incorporated?
Sorry. Let's put it behind us.
Okay.
Okay, good. Move to approve.
Okay, move to approve the goals as amended this evening.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks very much. I will distribute the document with those annotations, both a clean copy and a markup. So I think then that brings us to any remaining liaison reports. Linda, how about you? Would you like to?
I attended a CPC meeting where they spent a great deal of time talking about the conditions for the various grant award. Good conversation there. They are looking, they currently have an additional vacancy. There's one that's, we have a nomination on the table tonight. But there's now an additional vacancy that's
Did they vote in your chair? Do they vote in your chair at this hour?
Not yet. They began the discussion about officers, but that was not finished. And then the, coming up at their next meeting will be the June information meeting where new applicants can learn what the process is.
Okay.
And then I attended, as a member of the audience, the Concord Housing Production Plan Steering Committee. And they outlined the process and the timeline. They have already finished a meeting with five different focus groups. And their public forum, first public forum will be on June 7th at 7:00 PM, where they'll summarize the results from the forum groups. And by then, at least preliminarily, they'll be able to speak to the survey update. And this is a reminder to everyone who hasn't filled out the Housing Production Plan survey that it's still open and your input is needed.
Okay. Mary, do you have a further update?
A little bit more. I just want to add to what Carrie said earlier about the open library on Saturday. If you haven't been there, you really should. What I've done in the past is I've entered the library and gone towards the children's section and been intimidated and gone back to my comfort zone. But if you keep walking, it's beautiful back there. There's a lot of beautiful spaces. They do have an open rec, I think, for a person to help coordinate. They've got a lot of equipment there. It's lovely. And they, a lot of maker spaces, a lot of hands-on. So it's not the library I grew up with where, you know, you sit, a lot of hands-on. So again, they're looking for someone to coordinate that space to make the best use of, of
They have this beautiful forum, which is a meeting room, like auditorium style, with all of the, you know, all of the equipment, with the projectors and everything.
And all of her library, Doris Currents' library.
And then we have the beautiful trustees' room, which we are using weekly for our, using for our 2025 meetings.
Okay, so I would encourage people to go there. And the only other thing I have is I've, the White Pond Advisory Committee, I've reached out to the chairs. They're meeting this Wednesday. I haven't heard back, so I hope I'm able to help them.
And the children's library, it makes you want to have more children.
All right. Mr. Dane, do you have any other liaison updates?
Nothing, nothing to add, Your Honor.
All right. So in addition
The offense rests.
Okay, in addition to the Climate Action Advisory Board, where also Michael McEachair stepped down after completing his terms there. The, and they are looking for a member. The, unfortunately, the CSEC was unable to meet. They weren't able to get a quorum. So once again, that, the, you know, we need members in our boards and committees. And then I held the first of the chairs' breakfasts. And I'm moving the time from 9:00, which is more like a brunch, to 8:00, which is more like a breakfast going forward.
You going to serve food?
And, well, this last one was virtual and I, I suspect the next one will still be virtual. But, you know, again, I encourage chairs to join because it not only helps me, but I think it helps everybody to hear what's going on around town. And I guess that, that's all the updates I had for this week. So that brings me to miscellaneous correspondence.
Actually, Matt, I have a comment. I remember last week when Carmen was here giving us the debrief from the town meeting. She left us with something, an action item, I think, around Article 47.
Yeah.
Do you remember that?
Well, she said we may need to write a letter.
To the town manager.
But I, Carrie, would your staff draft the letter, the form of the letter that we would need?
Yeah, we were just talking about that within the last couple of days.
Okay, so
So it is on our radar.
Thank you.
All right. So now to miscellaneous correspondence, we have a letter from Tanya Galis along with her correspondence with the Division of Open Government just about topics that we mentioned, I mentioned in my chair's report last week. Concerns about any special relationship with the clerk and nomination of the clerk for that reason. Anyway, the Division of Open Government clarified that they did not feel that those comments formed a subcommittee. So, and I clarified in the last chair's remarks that really I was seeking more advice on procedure and scope of roles from someone who has just finished being chair, rather than deliberation. Then that brings us to public comment. If there's anybody that has any further public comment this evening, we have had public comment on individual topics as we've gone along. So I do not see anybody unmuting. Oh, I do see some.
Tanya, I just want to say thank you, Matt. I did read your comments last week in the minutes today. So I'm very grateful for those comments. Thank you.
Okay.
About, about this, about this office, office, offices.
Okay. Then I think that brings us to adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye. We're only 15 minutes.